It's funny, we have to go the other way.
Are they in your way?
My problem is...
No.
So we asked you to go those. And you have the awards.
Yeah, the awards are here.
So I have to sign which one. Who is outstanding?
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of May 19th, 2022 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education Administrative Offices, 15 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth date, time, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Thank you. Opening the meeting, we'd like to congratulate our own Dr. Mark Toback for winning a state championship award.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
In case you guys don't know who he is, he's the one that's sitting behind the Dr. Mo- Toback black over there. Congratulations, Dr. Toback.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Toback.
Yes, thank you so much. Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mr. Bubba.
Here.
Mr. Fetal.
Here.
Mrs. Kazan.
Here.
Mrs. Kumar.
Here.
Mr. Prusakos.
Present.
Mrs. Putup.
Here.
And Mrs. Winting.
Here.
Before we say our flag salute and moment of silence, Dr. Toback has something he would like to read, please.
So today, we'll be starting our meeting with the moment of silence and dedication to the memory of ninth grade Wayne Valley student Rocco Sivolela. Rocco passed away this week at the age of 15. He was diagnosed with cancer this past January, and since that time, the entire community rallied around him and his family. Rocco was an outgoing young man, positively touched numerous lives at Wayne Valley and across our entire school community. A fighter to the end, his fight became our entire community's fight. Rocco's spirit, grit, and his determination will always be remembered.
So we'll now stand for the flag salute and that moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These are my favorite board meetings where we recognize people. The first group of people who are going to be recognized are the heart and soul of Wayne Township Public Schools, our PTO presidents, and thank them for their service, and thank you to all the members of the PTO in the district and the students and parents who participate. Thank you.
Okay, so as valued members of our school community, you've helped to make a difference by giving your considerable time and talents to our schools. I'd like to acknowledge your outstanding contributions today. While all of you are PTO presidents, all of you have served for many years as members of the PTO before serving as president. You've spent years working tirelessly in support of our schools. Please know that what you do each and every day to support the children and staff is never taken for granted, and the board appreciates your efforts in improving the Wayne Township Public Schools. The educational experience for all Wayne students is greatly enhanced through the efforts of the PTO. Community receives a reminder about the generosity of the PTO at almost every board meeting when the board accepts your many donations to the school system, so we're grateful for your leadership in the community. Thank you. So first, I'd like to introduce Jamie Lillis. Jamie, is she here tonight? She couldn't make it? Okay. All right. Then if I could introduce Jen Crawford. Jalisa Viles from Ryerson Elementary. Okay, she's not able to attend tonight. Lauren Till from Packerak Elementary. So Kelly Catalano from James Fallon, is she here tonight? Alyssa Sokoloff from Tunis. Janelle Favre from Anthony Wayne. And Jessica Cronky from Wayne Valley. Okay, so if at this time I could ask our student representatives to come forward. Okay, so what I'd like to do is introduce both of our outgoing student representatives. First, we have G. One Song from Wayne Hills. And we have Gina Scaglione from Wayne Valley. So G. One will be attending the University of Michigan next year. Her major will be biopsychology, cognitive neuroscience. And Gianna is a junior, so she's not graduating, and perhaps she'll return next year as our student delegate, so thank you. Okay. So the next part, on to the music recognition program. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Paterno, longtime music teacher and band director at Wayne Hills, and all-around great guy.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Matt Paterno, and this is one of the greatest nights we have during the year, a night to recognize the wonderful accomplishments of our music students in how they've gone beyond what they were taught in school. Thank you to our school administration, our Board of Education, and the Wayne community for taking time tonight to honor the achievements of our outstanding music students and the accomplishment of our school music ensembles. The incredible resilience, dedication, and pride these students have shown in working to restart so many musical activities, not only in our schools but in our community, serves as a wonderful example to everyone who sees it. These students have learned the skills and knowledge taught to them in the Wayne School's music programs and taken it into the world. We celebrate the positions they have earned, competition entered, and awards received as secondary-level music students. It is extremely important to acknowledge at this time our elementary music teachers, as without their efforts and enthusiasm, these students would not be where they are today. Thank you, elementary teachers. A tree never grows stronger than its roots, correct? A special thank you to Nuri Akira for putting tonight's program together and also providing the wonderful certificates to our students. Now we'd like to turn the podium over to Ms. Janess Basalaccato and Mr. Christowald from Anthony Wayne Middle School.
Good evening. On behalf of myself, my colleague Christowald, and administration from Anthony Wayne Middle School, I'd like to recognize the following students. Fernanda Bedeo, North Jersey Junior Area Band, clarinet. Dean Bazooka, North Jersey Intermediate Region Concert Band, Barry Sax. Lakshmi Bhimavarpu, NJ SMA Grade Six Honors Band, flute. Mason Carter, NJ SMA Grade Six Honors Band, trumpet. Max Carter, North Jersey Junior Area Band and North Jersey Intermediate Region Concert Band, trumpet. Tommy Yurkin, NJ SMA Grade Six Honors Band, trumpet. Pranil Kumar, NJ SMA Grade Six Honors Band, alto sax. Halima Masri, North Jersey Junior Area Band and North Jersey Intermediate Region Symphonic Band, French horn. Amber Nguyen, NJ SMA Grade Six Honors Band, clarinet. Emma Yan, NJ SMA Grade Six Honors Band, trumpet. At this time, I'd like to turn the program over to Nicholas Vigili from George Washington Middle School.
Good evening. We would like to recognize a couple of students also. First, we have Peter Friar for Region One Elementary Honors Band. Jack McGrath, Region One Elementary Honors Band. And North Jersey Intermediate Region Symphonic Band for Skyler Wanger. We also would like to recognize some accomplishments of the program. So over the past weekend, here this past Saturday, the George Washington Band and Chorus went to the Music in the Parks Competition down at Six Flags, so we would like to recognize the accomplishments of the band at this time. So our sixth-grade band came in first place and had a rating of excellent. And our seventh and eighth-grade band also came in first place, had a rating of superior. And they also received the award for the best junior high middle school concert band that performed that morning. Thank you very much, and again, for having us here and for being able to recognize these students tonight and their wonderful accomplishments. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Laura Medley, our chorus teacher.
Good evening, I am Mrs. Laura Medley, and I am the Choral Music Director at George Washington Middle School. On behalf of myself, my colleague Nicholas Vigili, and the Wayne Board of Education, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize an exceptionally talented student who was named the overall junior high middle school vocal soloist at the Music in the Parks Competition this past weekend. Please join me in congratulating eighth-grade baritone Nicholas Revere. At this time, I would also like to recognize the chorus ensembles from George Washington Middle School. As Mr. Vigili mentioned before, this past weekend, we performed at the Music in the Parks Competition down in Jackson, New Jersey, so at this time, I'm going to recognize our chorus ensembles. The sixth-grade choir earned first place in the elementary treble choir category with the highest rating of superior. The seventh-grade choir earned first place in the middle school treble choir category, again, with the highest rating of superior. The eighth-grade choir earned first place in the middle school mixed category with, again, the highest rating of superior. And the Eagleettes Advanced All-Women's Ensemble earned first place middle school women's choir category, again, with the highest rating of superior. And finally, the Eagleettes also earned the highest score out of any middle school vocal ensemble and were named the overall middle school choir. At this time, I would like to pass the podium over to Heather Weinstein from Skyler Colfax Middle School. Thank you.
Good evening, it's my honor to recognize tonight our Skyler Colfax Middle School Honors Band and Choir participants on behalf of Mr. Puzak and Mr. Vogel and Mrs. Palumba. These students went above and beyond their school band or choir requirements and successfully auditioned for their respective ensembles. Congratulations to the following Skyler Colfax students. Middle school instrumental music. Noah Kim for trumpet, North Jersey Junior Area Band and North Jersey Region One Intermediate Concert Band. Ian Kwan, clarinet, North Jersey Junior Area Band. Leila Parada, oboe, North Jersey Junior Area Band. Hannah Smith, euphonium, North Jersey Junior Area Band. Tyler Winston, percussion, North Jersey Junior Area Band. And for Skyler Colfax Middle School Vocal Music. Annabelle Muniz, soprano II, 2022, North Jersey Intermediate Regional Chorus. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Skyler Colfax Program Ensemble Recognitions. The Skyler Colfax Seventh and Eighth Grade Concert Band participated in Band Through the Ages, combined with Wayne Hills High School, and received a superior rating. They also participated last week at the Dorney Park Concert Band Festival and also received a superior rating. I'd now like to introduce Mr. Matthew Paterno, band director of Wayne Hills High School.
Thank you. We'd like to start tonight, let me just find my sheet, so, recognizing Jared Kay for his placement into the North Jersey Area Band, also a full tuition scholarship to Berkeley School of Music. Jared. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say at the beginning, on behalf of Mr. Ruick, Mr. Glas, Mr. Scott, and myself, we would like to present. Second, we'd like to recognize Pratham Kumar for his Arts Ed New Jersey Solo and Ensemble Festival Performance. Congratulations. Next up, we'd like to recognize Janay Murray for her acceptance into the North Jersey Area Band on bass clarinet. Congratulations. Shake hands with Mr. Ruick. Next, we'd like to recognize Mr. Aaron Schwartz, North Jersey Area Band, clarinet. Shake hands with Mr. Ruick. And we'd also like to recognize oboist Juliana Steer for her North Jersey School Music Association Region One Intermediate Band. And lastly, although he could not be here tonight, his parents are with us, we'd like to recognize Kevin Valencia, who performed on Melaphone with last summer's 2021 World Champion Hawthorne Caballero's Drum and Bugle Chords. It was quite an accomplishment. Accepting is his sister Sadie. I'd like to take a quick second to recognize some ensembles that we are very proud of this year. Wayne Hills Marching Band won the Tournament of Bands Chapter 10 New York Metropolitan Area Group 3A Championships, a gold rating at the New Jersey Music Educator State Festival, and the best overall band at the Midland Park Band Competition. Wayne Hills Symphonic Band participated in the New Jersey Region One Concert Band Festival, receiving a silver rating, was very proud to host Band Through the Ages with Skyler Colfax Middle School, and also had a community concert in January. Our Wayne Hills Patriot Jazz Band produced a silver rating at the Westmofford Jazz Festival with King Nathan Fernando as an outstanding soloist. We also had a lot of ensembles this year. Our Patriot Five Ensembles played for the Shriners Annual Dinner Dance, the Brass Quartet played for the Mayor's Ukrainian Recognition Program, and for our spring concert. And last, but certainly not least, our Wayne Hills Millennium Winter Guard was first-place Scholastic Regional A at the Madawan Guard Show, and fifth place out of 19 Guards at the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network Championships in Pennsylvania, so congratulations to them. And I'd like to turn the podium back over to Ms. Lisa Rusanellis.
Hello, everybody, good evening. I'm going to put on a different hat, I'm going to represent for Mr. Baptiste this evening first, and represent all the instrumental music students. First off, we have Daniel Cho, who played clarinet in the North Jersey School Music Association Region One Symphonic Band. And next, we have Brother Jacob Cho, bass clarinet, North Jersey School Music Association Region One Wind Ensemble. You'll give that one to him? Maybe he just gave you one. Taken two. Next, Melissa Dogin, bassoon, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. Melissa Lara, oboe, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. Isabel Malmen, alto and tenor saxophone, North Jersey Area Wind Ensemble, NJ SMA Region One Wind Ensemble, and New Jersey All-State Band. I do believe, Isabel, that you are number one in the state, aren't you, in all-state? Nicholas McHale, trumpet, North Jersey Area Wind Ensemble, NJ SMA Region One Wind Ensemble, New Jersey All-State Band, and NJNJE, Region One Big Band for jazz. Alex Sandy, trumpet, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. We'll come back to ensembles in a minute, but now I'm going to put on my own hat for Wayne Valley High School and Chamber Choir, and I have Grace Resizer, alto II in Region One Treble Chorus, and All-State Treble Choir. I don't go anywhere in Chamber Choir, so this is all Mr. Baptiste's things. We do a lot of things for the community, we sang the Ukrainian Festival, we're singing for the Wayne Alliance on Tuesday, and we're also performing in the Triumph Honor Society Charity Show on Thursday, but Mr. Baptiste has some great ones going on here. Wayne Valley Marching Band was Class A State Champions for the marching band competition, the NJMBDA Championship. And then the Jazz Band, NJAJE State Finalists. And this year, the Wayne Valley Symphonic Band were participants in the New Jersey State Gala, that was the top 12 bands from New Jersey are selected to perform in this event. Excellent. And if I could put on my Anthony Wayne hat for a moment, because I do teach there too, we are participating in the NJMEA Choir Festival at Rutgers on Wednesday. I don't know how we'll do, but hopefully it will be wonderful, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders all together. And now, if I may for a moment, turn the program back to Ms. Jeanette Basalaccato.
Before we turn the meeting back over, there is one more individual that the Music Department would like to recognize for their outstanding achievement, principal of Anthony Wayne Middle School, Mr. Dave Almbach. A true leader... A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the equality of his actions and the integrity of his intent. Mr. Almbach is that kind of leader. Anyone who has ever known or worked with Dave knows of his compassion, selflessness, and commitment to helping others. In addition to guiding the students and staff at Anthony Wayne through some of the most challenging years in education, he has supported in immeasurable ways the entire Wayne music program, and we have become stronger because of his support and tireless dedication. Some of you may not know that prior to becoming principal of Anthony Wayne, Dave was the band director at Randolph High School, and of course, he is also a well-established musician himself. His strong musical background, his experience in the classroom, combined with his outstanding leadership skills, has made Dave Almbach a true champion of the arts, someone who understands the importance of music in the classroom and the impact it has on every young person, all of which is clearly evident here in the talent and skill shown by these outstanding student musicians who we are honoring tonight. And so, the news of his upcoming retirement, while met with rowdy cheers of congratulations for someone who so richly deserves it, was also mixed with a little bit of sadness from the entire Music Department. We will miss you, Dave, and so it is with great sincerity that the entire Music Department says, "Thank you. Thank you for supporting us in the Music Department." Congratulations on your very well-deserved retirement. We wish you and your family all the best in your future adventures.
This year, the focus for everyone has been on trying to return things to normal. The students we honor tonight have gone well beyond that. They are in no way normal. But I mean that in the nicest, proudest possible way. Because as Maya Angelou said, "If you are always trying to be normal, you will never know how amazing you can be." Thank you again for taking the time to honor these students here tonight. Students, congratulations. Keep working and come back stronger next year. The last thing I'd like to say is, a member of the Wayne Pat-- or tapping to Wayne, excuse me, is here tonight would like to take pictures of all the students by schools out in the lobby when we break. But thank you again. We appreciate the time.
Thank you. Right, recess. I'm going to recess. We're going to recess the meeting for five minutes, please, so go out, enjoy the moment, get your pictures taken, and congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you, sir. Yeah, on my back. It's just, no, I have my MRI yesterday.
My phone. This one isn't. You can't make it. You'll shine it. I love it. It's shining. Oh, my mother. Stretch. Go stretch. Can't see this much. Stretch. What? Public participation. It's on here again. I forgot it. Oh, it's not on the agenda. Yeah, I'm just going to report it. It wasn't the agenda. I'm fine. I'm trying to figure out. I think it's on here. But I don't know what we're talking about. Oh. Everybody go. I don't want to play. I don't want to play. I don't want to play. Well. I love it. I was never president. I was always treasurer, because at that time I had hearing problems. I had a hard time conducting meetings. And everything was like a big show, so we came running. I don't know. Yeah. Why? You're running. I can't hear. 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 I forgot it. Oh, it's not on the agenda. Yeah, I'm just going to report it. It wasn't the agenda. I'm trying to figure out. I think it's on here. But I don't know what we're talking about. Oh. I'm waiting. Guys, as we said, they're trying to find something. Okay. Everybody go. I don't want to play. I don't want to play. I don't want to play. I don't care. Put your gloves back in here. Well. I got it. I got it. I got it. I was never president. I was always treasurer, because at that time I had hearing problems. And I had a hard time conducting meetings. And I'm like, "What?" And everything was like a big show, so we came running. I don't know. Yeah, I mean. Why? You're running. I can't hear. 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 I was never president. I was always treasurer, because at that time I had hearing problems. And I had a hard time conducting meetings. And I'm like, "What?" And everything was like a big show, so we came running. I don't know. Yeah, I mean. Why? You're running. I can't hear. 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 Makes the bargaining easier. And you can't do that. No, but I'm already getting something. I'm done. Okay. So that's funny. But I can help you down easy. Okay. He ran a corporate board. Yeah. I went in the market. He was tampering. Whatever. Wait, that isn't hard. He was one of the people who ran a year. We need more of those. Exactly. Good check. Silver, pretty. I'm trying to get a new band. So this was the only color they had. Oh, yeah. So that's black. So this is an online old house. And they have lots of. I've been wondering if Mike Michelle watches. I have such a fan. For Mike Michelle watch? Yeah. Maybe. We'll see. But I'll send you, I can send you. Oh, yeah. I'll look at it. No, this is someone that I think they make discontinued pieces with a more expensive piece with metal on it. What, a watch? Yeah. It's the same brand as your gallop. Yeah, I see. Yes, Samsung. It's the exact same brand, but they have metal on it. I gotta change his face. I don't like it. I just haven't gotten around to it.
Did they move this back?
Yeah.
Are we all done with that?
What? 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 Thank you. I appreciate that. Very nice of you. You moved furniture, too?
Move it all. What's that? 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 What? 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 Thank you. I appreciate that. It's very nice of you. You moved furniture, too? Move it all. What's that? 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 What's that?
I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. Thank you. Dr. Toback?
So we're now at the administrative summary report. So what I'd like to do is just cover a few items briefly. Excuse me. The first one being our COVID update. So our numbers are definitely headed in the wrong direction. Going back to the COVID maps used by the New Jersey Department of Health to show COVID activity, our area is now orange on the map and is identified as a high COVID activity area, much like the rest of New Jersey. At this point, our numbers are climbing dramatically. Two weeks ago, we had eighteen staff members either testing positive or under quarantine. And that number, as of yesterday, was forty-one. Two weeks ago, we had a total of forty students testing positive or under quarantine. Now we have one hundred and forty-seven, either testing positive or under quarantine. So staffing is definitely becoming more of an issue here in Wayne because there's so many end-of-year events. There's also a lot of other things that are going on as planned. So a lot of times, those events require additional staff and substitutes. The problem is that COVID numbers are on the rise across the state, and all districts need substitutes at the same time because there still are quarantine requirements. So at this point, I'd like to talk a little bit about the referendum. The Board of Ed viewed a number of presentations about referendum, possible referendum, I should say, and all of our board members had an opportunity to tour our schools to see for themselves the facility needs that exist. So at this time, what I would like to suggest is perhaps planning for a retreat before the end of the school year to determine what our next steps would be. Reminder to all residents that the community forum will be held this year on May twenty-fourth, starting at six P. M. at the Cosmopolitan on Route twenty-three here in Wayne. Nathan Harmon will be the featured guest speaker, and he will be speaking about a variety of topics, including overcoming adversity, addiction, mental health, bullying, and leadership. I'm proud to continue to partner with Mayor Vergano in supporting this annual event. And I'd also like to recognize the Wayne Education Association, Wayne Alliance, and the Wayne Police Department for their ongoing support. It's a team effort that makes this event possible. It's very easy to attend. There are flyers all around the community, and our district newsletter includes a flyer as well. All you need to do is scan the Q.R. code. The event is free, and it includes an excellent dinner. Reminder to all parents that the Wayne Education Foundation will be holding its annual summer camp starting in early July. There are a number of fun and exciting educational programs available. That information is on their website. Update from the business office. So first of all, the transition to the state health benefits program is in process, and at this point, our employees are entering the information required for the transition. The district-wide security upgrade started on May eleventh at Wayne Valley and will continue throughout the summer. These are new security cameras that will be installed all across the district. After many years, Pines Lake, one of our schools that is most frequently without power, now has a generator. The construction and installation are complete, and the project is being closed out with testing and inspections. Also, the district has spent two, or many years renovating our high school science labs, and this year is no exception. The construction of two new science labs at Wayne Valley will take place over the summer. Ryerson and APT will also benefit from roofing work that will be completed during the summer. The school district underwent CUSEC monitoring, and our next meeting will be sharing the results of that process. As far as our H.I.B. report goes, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township Public School District. There were four incidents of H.I.B. investigated since my last report. None of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of an actual H.I.B. incident.
Our student representative reports. Thank you.
Wayne Hills senior Joseph Scoralli officially became an Eagle Scout on Sunday, April twenty-fourth. Joseph worked extremely hard to obtain his phenomenal achievement. Joseph has been a mentor for the Wayne Hills Stars Students Program throughout all of his four years. He has been a valuable member to the organization, socializing with special needs students in the L.L.D., M.D. programs, and helping them participate in group activities. Joseph is so passionate about supporting students that he decided to create a service project dedicated to them. Joseph excelled in this project, researching what sensory activities are and what types of therapeutic exercises benefit students with special needs. Joseph created fifty sensory bins for the students. Wayne Hills and the Stars Program are grateful for Joseph's hard work and effort. Congratulations to Wayne Hills Quiz Bowl team for the performance at the Colonia Arch Tournament this past Friday. Overall, the team made it to the semifinals. Outstanding performances by juniors Amy Hecht and Sam Dorfman and sophomore Adith Balaji led to a fourth-place standing overall. Great job, Quiz Bowl. Congratulations to the Wayne Hills New Jersey Math League team, led by coach and math teacher Todd Green. The competition consisted of six contests, and Wayne Hills earned the following commendations. Wayne Hills earned highest-scoring schools cumulative and was eleventh in the state of New Jersey out of one hundred and sixty-two participating schools. Wayne Hills FPLA has had great accomplishments this year in both community service and in competitions. We donated non-perishables and gift cards to the Oasis Women Shelter in December. For our NJFPLA regional competition, we had eighteen students placed in the northern region. At the state level, we had two students placed in the top ten. Senior Dorina Yushenko and junior Luke Corneber in the Chapter won an Award of Merit for our chapter website. We are also thrilled to have a student representative at Wayne Hills represent in a conference at Chicago. Luke Corneber, Corneber, Corneber will compete in counting one at the national competition. Ms. Noel and Ms. Michael are proud of all the FPL members, and we wish Luke the best of luck at Nationals. During the week of April nineteenth, Wayne Hills High School marked the twenty-fourth Annual Environmental Awareness Week. Teachers in all subject areas were invited to plan lessons during the special week that integrate an environmental theme to promote a greater awareness and sensitivity about local and global ecological issues that endanger our planet's resources and our human family. Wayne Hills Italian students were outstanding in this year's National Italian Exam Competition. Congratulations to junior George Salios, who won gold medal and a fifty-dollar cash prize. Silver medals go to Hannah Hajdu and Daphne Satyogo. Congratulations to Jessica Smith and Gina Passaro, who have been selected as champions and captains for the two thousand twenty-two Patriot Marching Band Color Guard. Thank you.
The National Honor Society is once again conducting its Kids Helping Kids program, which takes place weekly at the Wayne Public Library. With this longstanding program, the NHS students offer extra help in tutoring to elementary, middle, and high school students. Wayne Valley's SDA was held on April twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and the thirtieth. The show was a great success, and both teams were amazing. The results were that Blue Aerobics won first place dance, White Jazz got second place, and White Tap got third place. Overall, the blue team won the whole competition. Congrats to both teams on their hard work and dedication. Congratulations to junior Alex Sheplin for breaking the Wayne Valley Boys Lacrosse game for single-game goals from two thousand twenty-two, previously held by Colin Revere. In this game played on May third, Alex got eight goals. Way to go. Wayne Valley's Girls Flag Football had surprise visitors at their practice last week. Jet star Zach Wilson and Elijah Moore came out to show the girls some drills, and the girls didn't disappoint. Relay for Life will be held at the end of this month, on May twenty-first, on the Wayne Valley football field. The proceeds earned at this event will go to the American Cancer Society. So far, Relay for Life has raised forty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, and with about a week left, they are confident that they can hit the fifty K mark. Wayne Valley Girls Golf Team won the two thousand twenty-two Passaic County Championship with a team score of one hundred seventy-nine, and every girl placed in the top ten. This is the second year in a row that the team took home the county title. Congratulations.
Thank you. Donations, please.
The Wayne Council of PTOs donated one thousand one hundred four dollars to John F. Kennedy Elementary School, and the donation is to be used for field trips for all grade levels. Pines Lake PTO donated three hundred twenty-five dollars to Pines Lake Elementary School, and the donation is to be used for the Grade Two field trip. The Pines Lake PTO donated three hundred twenty dollars to Pines Lake Elementary School, and the donation is to be used for a Grade Four field trip student transportation.
Wayne Education Foundation donated three thousand five hundred dollars to Anthony Wayne Middle School, and this donation is to be used to purchase ten LEGO Education Spike Prime sets. Wayne Council of PTOs donated seven hundred fifty thou, seven hundred fifty dollars to the George Washington Middle School, and this donation is to be used for the eighth-grade class trip. Diversified donated fourteen thousand dollars to George Washington Middle School, and this donation is for ten N.E.C.P. series multi-sync P. four, six, three, forty-six commercial LED display computer monitors.
Thank you. And on behalf of the administration and the board, we would like to thank you again for being our student representatives. Revisions to agenda items. Mr. Moffett?
Yes, we have a few tonight. It starts in the Emergent section under item T., Emergent Human Resources. We, under T. four, approval of additional compensation, we will be revising number five, hours for Gina Rosa Home Program for student six-two-zero-seven-eight-zero-six-nine-six-two as follows, May second, two thousand twenty-two through May twenty, at seventy dollars and thirty-four cents per hours, two, I'm sorry, per hour, two hours a week, not to exceed sixteen hours. Also, May twenty-three through June twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, at seventy dollars and thirty-four per hour, four hours, not to exceed twenty hours. Under T. five, approval of revised items, revised number five, which is ID number six-one-three-eight, leave of absence to sick days, May second through June fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, personal family illness, June sixteen through June seventeen, two thousand twenty-two, other unpaid, June twenty through June twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, FMLA, NJFLA, from September one, two thousand twenty-two through November twenty-five, two thousand twenty-two. Under T. seven, approval of appointment of district staff for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Number two is Kelly Boyce. Be revised start date from October three, two thousand twenty-two, to September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, and we're going to add Kelly Boyce as per diem substitute at Pines Lake from September one, two thousand twenty-two, through September twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two. Moving on, under Emergent Legal, under X., School Resource Legal, we will be adding a few items tonight. The first is X. one, Approval of HIB Determination: Recommended Action Resolved that the Board Affirm the Superintendent's Decision on HIB Case Number one hundred and eighteen slash two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two, File an Appeal as Required by NJSA eighteen A colon thirty-seven dash fifteen parentheses B parentheses six parentheses E. We'll be adding X. two, which is Approval of School Cafeteria Playground AIDS Memorandum of Agreement and Salary Schedules. That action reads, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne Township Board of Education approves and ratifies the memorandum of agreement and salary schedule for a successor agreement between the School Cafeteria Playground AIDS Association and the Wayne Township Board of Education dated July one, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, and authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute a new collective negotiations agreement reflecting this memorandum of agreement and salary schedule as discussed in executive session." We'll add X. three, which is, reads W.E.A. Sidebar Agreement. That resolution reads as follows, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves a sidebar agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Education Association dated May sixteen, two thousand twenty-two, with respect to changes in medical, dental, and vision benefits, as well as compensation for coverages, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." We are adding X. four, which is W.P.A. Sidebar Agreement. That resolution reads as follows, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves a sidebar agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Paraprofessional Association dated May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, with respect to changes in medical, dental, and vision benefits, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement the same." Add X. five, which is W.C.M.A. Sidebar Agreement. That resolution reads as follows, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves a sidebar agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Custodial Maintenance Association dated May sixteen, two thousand twenty-two, with respect to changes in medical, dental, and vision benefits, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." We'll be adding X. six, Teamsters Local Eleven Sidebar Agreement, which is the Drivers' Unit. That reads as follows, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves a sidebar agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Local Eleven affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters dated May nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, with respect to changes in medical, dental, and vision benefits, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." And lastly, X. seven will be adding to tonight's agenda, and that is for the Teamsters Local Eleven Sidebar Agreement, which represents a dispatcher's unit. That reads as follows, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the sidebar agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Custodial Maintenance Association," excuse me, that should read Teamsters Local Eleven Sidebar Agreement, "dated May nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, with respect to changes in medical, dental, and vision benefits, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to make all further steps required by the terms of settlement to further implement the same." And that concludes tonight's additions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. We have some retirements to celebrate this evening. Thank you. I'll move start at this end. Mr. Passakis?
Keith Warfield. Keith Warfield has been a music teacher for Wayne Township Public Schools for twenty-four years. Mr. Warfield's tenure in Wayne began as a traveling teacher, one who inspired the elementary students at Randall Carter in the morning and secondary students at Wayne Valley High School in the afternoon. In two thousand and two, he joined the Wayne Valley staff full-time and led the Valley students to a win for percussion in the two thousand and seven Tournament of Bands. More recently, the Trans-Siberian Orchestra heard Mr. Warfield's percussion ensemble perform and sent them all autographed tour books. Outside of the classroom, Mr. Warfield is an accomplished composer and musician. As a director, he led the Hawthorne Caballeros and Long Island Sunrisers to world championships. He also earned a world championship as a percussionist for the New York Skyliners. The administration and staff wish him all the best as he begins a new chapter.
Thank you.
James Rapp. Jim Rapp began his teaching career at A.P. Terhune in September two thousand eight and has taught in grades five, three, and two during his tenure. Jim is an engaging and energetic educator who will be missed by his APT community. Students loved Mr. Rapp's soft-spoken manner and kind heart. Jim ran the Green Team Club for many years and taught students how to care for plants and the environment. This club was integral to keeping the APT grounds beautiful. He was in charge of our Earth Day Committee for many years, guiding our students and teachers to a greener and cleaner planet. Jim is also a history buff and shared many engaging stories with the students. He always had a wonderful trivia tivitz to share with them all. Jim is always available to lend a helping hand, whether it be cleaning snow off fellow staff members' cars or carrying in heavy items, always a true gentleman. The APT staff and community wish Mr. Rapp all the best in his retirement and in his next chapter. We will miss his warm, selfless, and fun presence at our school.
Thank you. Mrs. Kazan?
Thank you, Madam President. Maria Guarino. After seventeen years teaching Spanish in Wayne, we congratulate Mrs. Maria Guarino on her retirement. She's thoroughly enjoyed teaching Spanish at Fallon, Ryerson, Skylar Colfax, and finally Wayne Hills. Making lifelong friends with so many wonderful and professional teachers, administrators, and school staff that have been dedicated to our students in the Wayne school system has been wonderful. She's accomplished many goals throughout her years, but her greatest reward has been sharing the classroom with her students. It has been an amazing experience seeing the progression and achievements of the many students that she has had the opportunity to teach, to mentor, and to build that bond as they become adults. She would like to thank the Central Office and Administration for their support throughout her career, and a special thanks to her supervisor, Christina Ventamilia, for her dedication, guidance, and inspiration. She will be spending her retirement with family, relaxing with a good book, and traveling and discovering new places. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Bubba?
Beth Katz. Mrs. Beth Katz has been a teacher in Wayne Public Schools for the past twenty-one years as an applied technology teacher at Wayne Valley High School. In her most recent position, she has been teaching photography classes, which teach students how to complete industry-relevant projects and skills that apply to almost any profession. Mrs. Katz's knowledge and abilities transcend the classroom, and her dedication to Wayne Valley has not gone unnoticed. Through her numerous projects, she has encouraged students to publicly display their creativity throughout Wayne Valley in stunning and inspiring images. We would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude for her many years of dedication to our school, and especially for all the lives that she has impacted over the, over those years. Congratulations, Mrs. Katz, on your retirement from Wayne Valley High School. We hope it is enjoyed with the memories of the year spent contributing to the success of our students and filled with many new experiences. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mrs. Kumar?
Regina Vollman will be retiring from the Transportation Department on June first, two thousand twenty-two. Regina began her career for the Wayne Township Public Schools as a bus driver on February fourteenth, nineteen ninety-four. Over the course of her twenty-eight-plus years of service, she has been a dedicated, hard worker for the department. With Regina being a longtime Wayne resident living close to work, she was always available day or night for anything the dispatchers needed, from moving vehicles out of floodwaters to last-minute trips or even going to the North Cove to help other drivers that may need help with their vehicles on the weekends. For the majority of her time in the Transportation Department, Regina chose to drive as an athletic or spare driver. She assisted the department both morning, afternoon, and into the night. Regina would come as a spare driver in the morning to cover for drivers who were absent so that our students got to school on time. Then, in the afternoon and night, she would do what she most enjoyed, driving for our athletic teams. Regina's work ethic was second to none, and she will be missed. As she leaves her job with us, this will allow Regina more time to spend with her grandchildren. The Transportation Department and the Wayne Township Public Schools wish to express their sincere thanks and appreciation for her outstanding support and dedicated service. From all your friends and coworkers, best wishes for a long, happy, and healthy retirement. May the next phase of your life bring all that you seek and even more.
Thank you. Mrs. Wintick?
Audrey Patterson. Pines Lake School is honored to celebrate Mrs. Audrey Patterson's retirement after twenty-five years of service. During her time at Pines Lake, she has cultivated meaningful relationships with her students, families, and colleagues. Her reputation as caring and loving teacher and her consistent and firm demeanor have made her an invaluable member of our community. She has helped shape and raise countless generations of students and supported many new teachers as a mentor and a guide. They transitioned to Pines Lake. As a community, we are grateful for all her contributions, acknowledging that she has consistently gone above and beyond in all her duties and has set an example for us all. We wish her all the best in her retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. We wish our retirees all the best. Next, we are going to be open for comment on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for the comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at subsequent meetings under Old Business.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christopher John. My address is forty-five Littlewood Court, and I'm a junior here at Wayne Valley. I'm here to propose an idea to consider, but before I begin, I would like to share a brief narrative I had some weeks ago. I was walking down the track during my physical education class, discussing whether Shay's Rebellion of seventeen eighty-six or Whiskey's Rebellion of seventeen ninety-four had resulted in the U.S. government establishing authority through military means. I was preparing for the upcoming AP United States History exam during gym class. This exam, along with AP Chemistry and AP Physics, proved to be exceedingly challenging. However, this does not negate the fact that regular school tests are also very difficult. Like many others, I strive to obtain good grades while simultaneously working to excel in sports. With these motives, I came to understand that taking school requires much sacrifice in order to succeed. However, it has taught me something of even more significance. However, it has taught me something of even more significance. The value of time is not one to be taken granted for. I'm not alone in this struggle, for there are many other physically active students that fight the limits of time. To return back to my narrative of studying during physical education, I offer my proposal. Give students that are able to achieve daily exercise of 60 minutes the choice to replace physical education with study hall. It is true that the CDC claims physical education providing benefits that come in the form of improved test grades and standardized test scores, the ability to stay on task in the classroom, and increased levels of physical activity. However, these benefits are not applicable to all. Regarding the first claim, improved test grades and standardized test scores, offering a study hall to students will give them an extra hour to study for tests or to complete assignments. There's a clear positive correlation between time spent studying and grades earned. Giving students an extra hour to study is crucial for their academic success and relieves the heavy load that they must bear. I believe many students like myself, who have had to study rigorously for these current exams, would appreciate having an extra hour to study for AP Psychology, AP Biology, AP Literature, and Composition, et cetera. On the other hand, it could allow students who are struggling to learn a subject to simply catch up to the rest of the class. For the second point, the CDC claims physical education offers the ability to stay on task in the classroom. I believe that physically active students are already attaining the benefits of daily exercise and thus do not need to get these benefits from gym class. They already get what they need. With this extra time, extracurricular activities like learning an instrument, community projects, reading a book, or other hobbies can now be something students have the ability to do past school hours. On an extreme, students could even get an extra hour of sleep at home. Being a student that takes four AP classes and two honors classes, I, among many others, can say that sleep is very limited. Whether it be sleeping around 12, 1, 2, 3, or even 4 a.m., lacking sleep is brutal for some students to focus in their classroom setting. Offering them an hour to complete work at school gives them time for one precious extra hour of rest. Lastly, the CDC claims that physical education offers increased levels of physical activity. I will not fail to acknowledge that this statement is applicable to many who fail to achieve at least 60 minutes of daily exercise outside of school, but I will not accept that this supposedly increased level of physical activity has the same effect for others. In my past years of physical education, I have seen questionable activities deemed adequate: throwing a FISB five yards in front, rolling a soccer ball to one another, playing a kickball game at walking speed, attempting to throw a cornhole bag three yards into the cornhole. As said before, I understand that these activities are critical for many. What about those that have daily practice, run a daily mile, lift weights with friends?
I'm sorry, that's your time.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. If there's no one else wanting to come up to speak, young man?
Agenda items.
Agenda items.
Agenda items.
Okay. Is that was really agenda item?
Yeah.
Would you like to come up and finish, young man?
Yeah.
Thank you. Come on up.
As I was saying, I believe that physically active students are already attaining the benefits of daily exercise and thus do not need to get these benefits. Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah. Okay. As said before, I understand that these activities are critical for many, but what about those that have daily practice, run a daily mile, lift weights with friends, or have outside sport activities? I have not come to deem physical education unnecessary, but to offer the notion that some students would benefit off of a study hall rather than the gym class. Only students that can provide proof of their daily exercise should be given this opportunity. Proof can come in the form of an LA Fitness Employee Signature, YMCA Employee Signature, the fitness app on the phone, or even to the coaches of the sport. These are all ways students can prove their achievement of 60 minutes of daily exercise. I have spoken as an advocate for many hard-working but struggling students and not as an enemy of physical education. Thank you all for allowing me to speak for you.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
Move to close public portion, Madam President.
Thank you. Second? Second, Mr. Fatale. Okay. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Mrs. Kazan.
Thank you, Madam President. On May 12, the Policy Committee met with myself, Mr. Fatale, Mrs. Wentick, Mrs. Putup, and Paula Clark, and Dr. Toback, were you there? No, I don't think so. For some reason, it's on here. We have one bylaw policy to discuss, which is 0167, Public Participation at Board Meetings. And we discussed the consensus of the Board for changes that were made two meetings back. That'll be rewritten, referred back to the Committee for final approval, and soon to be on an agenda near you. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. Do you want to move the agenda? Agenda? Discussion? Comments?
Oh, I'll move the agenda.
Okay. I have a motion to move the agenda. A second from Mrs. Kazan. Could you take the vote, please? Mr. Moffett.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Abstain on X one, yes to all.
Mrs. Wentick?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Fatale?
Abstain on X one, yes to the rest.
And Mrs. Putup?
Yes, abstain on my name in section S, please. Thank you.
Motion carries.
I would like, since we just approved her, to congratulate Courtney Duane Savastano for new...
I can't hear you.
All right. Is that better now?
Thanks.
Okay. Since we just approved her, I would like to congratulate Courtney Duane Savastano, the new principal of Anthony Wayne Middle School, who's here in the audience. Congratulations. Okay. This portion of the evening is open to public comment. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employer or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Thank you.
I'll move.
Second.
Proceed. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is Ryan Zamzegi. I had sent a few emails. I didn't hear back, so I figured I'd come here and present. It is about possibly turning the High Schools Student Dance Association into a docu-series for television. We had started this back in 2019, right before the pandemic. I know we had conversations with Dr. Toback and the principal and vice-principal Draždžak and the advisors, the staff advisors. Anyway, we had filmed a kind of a presentation video. NBC Studios was here, and they filmed it. Lifetime Network has offered to pick it up as a series. Now, there's a lot more conversation that needs to be had. I just didn't hear back from anybody, so I wanted to hopefully present this so that we could have a conversation going. Oh, sorry. My address is 156 French Hill Road. So, I graduated Valley in 2007. I was a cheerleader. I was in SDA. Go White! My brother, up until this year, was the JV coach for soccer at Valley. I'm just stating this because I want you guys to know that I am a Wayne, Waynehead, I guess they call us. I love Wayne. I love Valley. I go and visit my teachers. I had Mr. Warfield when I was in Randall Carter. I had Ms. Katz. So, I just want you guys to know that this docu-series isn't to make anybody look bad. It's because SDA, like I'm telling you, to this day, I'm still passionate about it, and I wasn't even like a captain or in it. It is all-inclusive. It brings together the staff and the students. And on top of that, I know that the enrollment is down for the school system, which is something that obviously we want to build up. This is a great opportunity to bring people from the private schools over into our public school system. I know that there's, again, more conversation that needs to be had. I would love to have you guys speaking with executives at Lifetime and whatnot, but I know they offered a large sum of money to film, to be donated to the Wayne School System, to be used however it needs to be used. All the sales from the show, since it would be on television, Lifetime Network, all the ticket sales would be kept by the schools. We're not taking any of that. Also, yeah, obviously, not a lot of people are... Obviously, some people will not want to be filmed because it's television. We don't plan on filming the SDA show itself, and we will bring in dancers and refilm it off-campus. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Good evening. Brittany Corl, 36 Lawrence Road. I'd just like to address the comprehensive health and physical education mandate for grades kindergarten to eighth grade set to be implemented this September from the state, which includes LGBTQIA+ gender fluidity, masturbation, and anal sex material that the state has acknowledged is a massive overreach, not to mention grossly age inappropriate. We'd just like to know what the Board is planning on doing regarding this mandate. As you know, East Hanover Township School District, as well as Garwood Township, have already sent out their plans to the parents of the community, and we are just asking that this Board follow suit and inform the community and parents of its intentions with regard to the implementation of this material prior to next month's meeting. And I also ask that before the end of this meeting, we have a verbal commitment to fulfilling the request. If this can't be done, then we'd like to propose that the Board vote on a decision this evening. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Toby Anderson. I'm a Republican running for Congress. I'm not a resident of Wayne. I'm here to address the same issue about the curriculum that's coming into place in September. Parents need to know now, not in September. Parents need to be able to decide whether they're going to reduce enrollment further, as was pointed out, or whether they're going to stay in the school system. And you need to give them a chance. Additionally, our kids have civil rights, and we, as their parents, are the guardians of their civil rights. The BOE and the Teachers Union don't get to take those rights away from us. What you guys should be doing is fighting the state, fighting the Department of Education, following East Hanover as a minimum, but/or just trying to refuse implementing the curriculum. If you wait until after the summer to tell the people of Wayne what you intend to teach them, teach their kids, and how you intend to teach it, then you're just manipulating the parents, taking advantage of how busy they are and that they won't have time to pull their kids out or find an alternative. It's just manipulation, and that's a cheap authoritarian trick. You need to resist this twisted curriculum and sue the Department of Education and the state on behalf of your citizens and your kids. Stick to the academics, stop manipulating the children, and vote for restoring our parental and civil rights. We need to keep your hands and the government's hands off of our kids. Parents should be able to determine what they learned about sexuality. They have 18 years to be kids. Let them be kids. Thank you. That's it. Can we get out?
Thank you.
My name is Norman Robertson. I'm a Wayne resident. First of all, let me congratulate Dr. Toback for the honor that he's gotten. And I also want to congratulate everybody who was here earlier this evening. That's a remarkable show of strength by our music department and by everybody involved, especially the children. Absolutely outstanding. And as we look ahead from here, I want to just throw in two items. Number one, I don't envy you your task over the next few months, because it's going to be a difficult thing dealing with very difficult, controversial, curriculum-oriented questions. One of the things I would suggest to you is to consider what you will look for in a curriculum when it starts to be a question. What will you be looking for? What is the prism through which you will view the recommendations that are made? I know my prism... I pretty much know what my prism would be. Number one, it would be the Golden Rule. Number two, it would be the Constitution. Everybody here signed a document to uphold it when you took office, not just the ceremonial stuff. I would take a look at the rule of law, and I would take a look at being each other's neighbor and being sensitive to the fact that serving on the school board or writing a curriculum, and I'm talking to the teachers as well or anybody else who's involved in that, is not an ideological exercise. It's not a political exercise. Some other things that they've discussed in other districts, like what would happen in Westfield when they're talking about things that will be taught to first graders, to me, I think it's unfair to first graders to be taught the nuances of gender theory when, in fact, they've just learned how to tie their shoes. So, you're going to have a tough time ahead, and I think you need to bring the community, and I agree with what the gentleman just said, you need to bring the community into the process. At best, you could make them part of whatever committee is doing this, but at the very least, you should have open public hearings when it comes to that. And if you're unwilling to do that, then it speaks volumes. What we learned tonight from the young men and women that we saw was that it is possible to work as a team. It is possible to work together. It's only when people want to overreach that it's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight's earlier event was amazing to see how much of the community and how many hard-working students we have. And it was. It was an encouragement even for me with wanting to see, you know, further bridging after so much tension this year. And after the last election, we talked in how we want this to be a new chapter for our town because there was so much contention and division. And so, I just want to appeal and beseech you to really consider, there might not be a lot of numbers here because everybody's home with events with their children and their two parents working off in time, so they might not come to the meeting, but they come out to vote. And so, their voice is here. And so, maybe some of us are here a lot and representing, but it's because we hear and we know the heartbeat of so many parents. Please, 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 hear what we're saying and what we're asking about this curriculum, about protecting the innocence of our children, and validating the sanctity of the home. And because come fall, if our requests are not considered and we don't have that opportunity to choose and exercise our rights on how we want to raise our children with regards to their sexual education, there's going to be a greater divide. We don't want to go back to all that contention. So, for the sake of the community... So for the sake of the community, I am asking you, please, again, we might not have a lot of numbers here because everybody's home with their children doing activities. That's why we love Wayne, but they will come out in different ways. So please consider it. Thank you.
Hi. Ryan Batter shield, 63 Kamau Drive. I just want to follow up on those last two a little bit because Dr. Tobak. Better? So I just want to follow up on the last two comments because Dr. Toback has committed four times out of the last meetings that I've been here at least to including us in the whole of this process and ensuring that the parents do get to be, to look at the curriculum, have a say in the curriculum, be a part of that entire process. Having seen some of the other towns come out with things already, I just hope they're being more proactive at removing some of the controversy from the things that they have seen. I hope that that's what is going on here. I don't know how far you are with that process. I ask every time, I'd like to know. And so I'd really just like an update on where we are with that and when we can start getting involved with that ourselves so that we can plan our time around that as well. Thank you.
Cindy Simon Wayne. Change of topic. So today is Global Accessibility Awareness Day. This is a day that is dedicated to making people aware of the importance of digital access for people with various kinds of disabilities. And one of the reasons that's really important is so that people can get information and so that people can make informed decisions. And speaking of information and informed decisions, as a college professor, I'm almost done with grading final exams. Thank God. But what I see over and over is that when people are coming into college, they don't have the information literacy skills they need, and they don't have the critical thinking skills they need. So I implore, as you look at curriculum, to really look at teaching people what are valid sources of information, what are good places to get information, how do you detect what they call crap, it's actually an acronym for information literacy, I didn't make it up, and then how do you think critically about things? Somebody mentioned AP tests before, and one of the things they look for on AP tests is that ability to think critically about different views and different ideas and then to support a position, whatever position you're supporting. So that's what I want to stand for. On the issue that everybody else has gotten up and spoken, I will say this, there needs to be open communication, there needs to be clear communication so everybody in the community knows what's going on. And we also need to remember the difference between teaching sex and teaching respect and acceptance. I don't think we should be teaching anybody about how to have sex or what people are doing in their bedrooms in elementary school. It's really, nobody's, not the appropriate thing for a schoolhouse. But I also think that teaching that Joanna lives with mom and dad, and Sarah lives with mom, and Sue Ann lives with mom, dad, and grandma and grandpa, and Julia lives with mommy, and mommy is no more indoctrination than teaching that, I can't remember the name of any kid I just said, but the first one's Christian, the second one's Jewish, the third one's Muslim, and the fourth one's atheist, is proselytizing. It's just a fact of life. Folks are around with different family units, and we should respect that. We shouldn't be teaching how they got there, though. Thank you. At very young ages, how they got there.
Seeing no one else, I move to close.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Old business. Oh, sorry. Would you like to comment, please, Dr. Toback?
I think what does make sense is that I know that one of the speakers spoke about the Garwood Board of Education and about the actions that they're taking regarding health and physical education standards. So interestingly, Mr. Gepper is the attorney for the Garwood Board of Education. So I think it makes sense for him to clarify exactly what the Garwood Board of Education did do.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Yes, generally, the actions the other night were no different from other years when districts review and adopt curriculums. For them, it was the first step in the process. What they did do is stated through a resolution that the board did not approve of specific language in the Department of Education's curriculum and did not want to include them in their curriculum. The board is going to have to take a second step over the summer to work with the administration to develop a curriculum for health for September, for the start of the school year. So as opposed, I just want to be clear that it's not the end of the process, that this is really just the first step, to make some comments with respect to the DOE's proposed 2.1 section of the health curriculum. They'll have to continue to do work to approve a health curriculum, just like every other school district has to.
Mr. Gepper, did they vote to not follow the state's standards?
Yes, they did at that point, but what they indicated is specific language. There are four terms in particular that, in the resolution, that they stated they found objectionable and that they did not intend to include that in the curriculum when they moved forward. But I want to stress again, it was the first step, that they are not at the point where they're adopting their curriculum for the year in that area.
Now, just regarding the other comments that were made, so there are some different things that local boards of education can do. As far as, I mean, I reemphasize what I had mentioned previously, the district has a process that we follow when we develop curriculum. We understand that there are many people in the community that are concerned about the health and physical education curriculum. I can't, there's not much more I could do. I'm right on the mic. So I guess that being said, we look forward to engaging the community. We look forward from hearing from the community regarding, as we move ahead. But it's going to be something that will take place. We have to get through the end of the year. There's a lot happening right now. So we will be doing that during the summer. And so as I have said before, throughout this process, the school district will provide updates to the community because we understand how important it is to so many in the community.
Old business. New business.
Go ahead, Doris. Your hand right there, just pointing to you. Huh? Do you have your hand there? Are you pointing to me? Yeah. Oh, you don't point to you. Okay.
Please, somebody go. Would be my pleasure.
Well, unfortunately, the student left who made a suggestion about using his gym class to study, I'd like to offer him some advice on speaking to legislators about this because it is carved in statute that gym class has to take place. I don't disagree with his suggestion, but it might be something a little difficult to monitor as far as what type of exercise students are getting that we have no control over outside of the school day. But I understand his passion and his reasoning, and he could reach out to his, start out with the 40th District Representatives, Senator Carrato, Assemblyman DePhillips, and Assemblyman Rooney, because they would be the ones to write that sort of legislation. Or he could go to Vingal Paul, who's the senator in charge of the Education Committee down in Trenton. I want to address the other item. I think Dr. Toback could get back to the gentleman about the SDA situation because I think that was an executive matter, maybe a legal matter that we, I don't want to address. Well, if you want to go ahead, but I have.
There was an outcome, so.
I thought so.
Okay, yeah, so there was an outcome. Is it Zimzeki? You had someone who was working with you at the time of the project? It was not you. It was some other, it was another woman, right? So the board had already identified a number of concerns regarding moving ahead with the project, and so at the time, the answer was no because they felt it compromised what the experience would be like for the girls or the boys participating in SDA. So whoever was involved at that time, the board members that were involved, they decided that, at the time, it would basically change the dynamic of the event, and so they declined to move ahead with the project.
Okay, if I may finish. Thank you.
I'm sorry, one second. You can stay after the meeting and speak to administration. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Anderson, candidate for office. This is a board meeting, and we're nonpartisan here. Our students are nonpartisan. They're not Democrats. They're not Republicans. I, for one, like to respect that here in these chambers. When we're having a board meeting, you're certainly entitled to your opinion, but you're a candidate, and I think campaigning here is out of line. That's my opinion. And you're not a resident, but as far as our students are concerned, we're not kicking any can down the road. We're not postponing anything. We're not disrespecting our parents. We have a process, and we're following it. And up until just last week, we were still waiting to hear from the State Department of Ed and the State Board of Education, who can't seem to make a final decision. But we will follow our own process. We've always been transparent. Our curriculum is available online. It will continue to be available online, and as soon as we're ready to roll that curriculum out, we'll have presentations for the public. We have a reputation of always doing that, and we'll continue to do so. Mr. Robertson, I don't know what the heck gender theory is, but I know we're not teaching it to first graders. As I understand the standards, I'm sorry?
It's pretty plain.
I'm sorry, sir, it's not the public's time to talk. It's my turn to speak. You can yell at me in the hallway when I leave. That's up to you. So we don't teach gender theory, and it's not in the standard. So I'm not even sure what that means. And we've answered when and how we're planning to roll out the curriculum.
I just want to mention to the public that you really need to give an opportunity to the board members to complete their statements. I mean, they sat and listened to the public as they're supposed to. Now they're trying to respond to you, so we just ask for the appropriate decorum. Thank you.
The type of education we offer students, you can call it sex ed, you could call it whatever you want, but I prefer to call it health education. Sex education is health. It is something that's been around since the 60s. The only thing that's evolved, from what I could see, is the fact that people are willing to acknowledge that there's different types of sex that could cause different repercussions, like sexually transmitted diseases, and there's ways, newer ways to avoid pregnancy and things like that. And you're going to be, you keep saying kids, kids, kids. They're not kids. They're students, and most of them in high school, they're your children. I understand that. Please, come on, let me just finish. You don't have to agree with me, but could at least respect me enough to have the time to speak. I listen to you quietly. The students in high school, for instance, are going to be graduating next month. Okay, so what do you want to prepare them for when they go off to college? Nothing? These students are going to be making their own decisions. You're not going to be able to call the college and say, I don't want you to teach this to my child. I don't want you to teach them what campus rape is about, or what they should do to protect themselves, and things of that nature. We have to incrementally prepare them for life. That's part of the health education. The health education. Again, you don't have to agree with me. But back to the positive note, I want to thank all the PTO presidents and the volunteers that go out of their way for our students every day. I suspect most of these ladies who couldn't come here this evening were busy doing a PTO event or an event for their child. They go out of their way to work tirelessly for the students of this district. And of course, our musicians and vocalists, they're amazing. I attended a Skylar Colfax concert the other night, and I just have to remark that a lot of those eighth graders, outgoing students and the high school students, they had a couple of years of mostly remote study, mostly remote practices, and they're just phenomenal, and they always rise. And our teachers helped them rise by also finding ways and strategies to make the best of the situation. They were fantastic. And I also want to thank all the members of the community, I'm going to choke up, who went above and beyond for Rocco. This is a great community. And congratulations, Dr. Toback. That's it.
Mrs. Kumar.
Okay, so I just want to start by thanking and congratulating all of the musicians and vocalists for all of their achievements. Somebody who was in that area growing up, it's a lot of work outside of school, and it takes up just as much time as if you're on a sports team. It's a lot. So I want to congratulate them and congratulate and acknowledge all of the PTO presidents and anybody who's working with the PTO and volunteering because that's also sometimes thankless, but sometimes it's great. You get to see all the kids, and you get to see all of the smiles on their faces when you see an event kind of be pulled off, and all the kids are happy. So as far as some of the other comments, we have already continued to discuss the fact that the State Board of Ed has gone back and forth, so we're still waiting for some guidance on that. But I want to just mention the Secretary of Education and what he has said in the past. So he has already said that the guidance for all of these things is about acceptance, and that is the big reason behind the majority of all of this stuff. So when we're talking about the younger grades and they're saying sexuality, what they're talking about is the fact that some people might have two mommies and two daddies. We're not talking about actual sex. That's different. So, and there is no actual lesson plans written. That is just not the case. We have not developed the curriculum here, and we have not written lesson plans. So we will keep everyone involved in that process. Thank you.
Mr. Fatale.
First and foremost, again, I want to reiterate, congratulations to all the students, the faculty, outgoing PTO presidents, Dr. Toback. Mr. Gepper, thank you for explaining the whole Garwood situation and how they have started that process. To the residents who did speak tonight, we hear each and every one of you. Has the state given us an updated timeline as far as now?
So you mentioned at one of our previous meetings that there was a May 4th State Board of Education meeting, right? And that meeting was quite the event. You have, from what I was able to say, I didn't watch every minute of it, but what did happen was, at that time, the governor requested that the State Board of Ed evaluate the health and PE standards for appropriateness by grade level or by age. The State Board of Ed refused to do that. The State Board of Ed, in a kind of a narrow decision, there's a number of State Board members that were opposed to moving ahead or at least postponing the implementation of the curriculum till a time when this could be studied further. The commissioner and a majority of the members of the State Board decided otherwise. But I would like to just mention very quickly that if you are to be successful with this, I also think it's important to recognize that this standard came from legislators, right? It was ultimately approved by legislators who ultimately voted yes to moving ahead with this in 2020. So while I understand your interest in speaking to the Board of Ed, ultimately, it is your state legislators that approve this, and it is also your state legislators that can ultimately make changes. So at some point, like I said, while I do recognize your concern, and I do recognize that, you know, obviously, the Board of Ed is on the front lines of this, there's also a little bit of a pattern here, I hope you're all seeing, right? That ultimately, there's controversial issues and controversial issues where decisions are made at the state level, and then it's pushed down to the local school district, and all of you get angry at the board members. But the reality is, where does this come from? It doesn't come from here. It doesn't come from this Board of Ed.
the health and PE standards for appropriateness by grade level or by age. The State Board of Ed refused to do that. The State Board of Ed and a, kind of a narrow decision, there's a number of state board members that were opposed to moving ahead or at least postponing the implementation of the curriculum till a time when this could be studied further. The commissioner and a majority of the members of the state board decided otherwise. But I would like to just mention very quickly that if you are to be successful with, with this, I also think it's important to recognize that this, this, the standard came from legislators, right? It was ultimately approved by legislators who ultimately voted yes to moving ahead with this in 2020. So I, while I understand your interest in speaking to the Board of Ed, ultimately, it is your state legislators that approve this and it is also your state legislators that can ultimately make changes. So at some point, like I said, I, well, I do recognize your concern and I do recognize that, you know, obviously the Board of Ed is on the front lines of this. There's also like, there's also a little bit of a pattern here, I hope you're all seeing, right? That ultimately there's, there's controversial issues and controversial issues where decisions are made at the state level and then it's pushed down to the local school district and all of you get angry at the board members. But the reality is, where does this come from? It doesn't come from here, it doesn't come from this Board of Ed. So just hope you keep that in mind as we move ahead with this process.
Thank you. So just to, to let everybody know, I think we do hear everyone and I do honestly believe that this board up here will be as transparent as possible, that we can be moving forward with this because I know all eyes are on us and I do honestly believe that the best interest will be in, for our students. And we have a tough task ahead of us, but we will do the job the right way. And I could say that for, even though everybody's not here, the other eight members of this board. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to open up and say, I, I want to offer my condolences to Rocco Civalella's family. They're going through a nightmare that I, I can't even imagine. Some of you may know that my oldest son is a classmate, a class of 2025 of Rocco's. No matter what I say, we, we can't bring him back, but may his memory be eternal. I also wanted to, to thank the PTO presidents. The PTOs, I'm surprised, they're not bigger than what they are. They provide a lot of resources and a lot of activities for all, all our students. So I want to encourage everyone, every parent, every guardian to join the PTOs, especially the male guardians, they seem to be somewhere else, so they need to show up at these PTO meetings. I wanted to congratulate the music programs. I, I was blessed to attend the music programs this year, their, their first performances in three years. So I saw, I got to see many of the students that were honored here tonight perform. So congratulations to the vocalists, the, all the music scholars that, that were here tonight. I want to address Christopher Jeong, who was here from Wayne Valley with his 60 Minutes recommendation. That might be an opening for, you know, with the legislation, the proposed legislation where, you know, we would push back the high school times earlier. Perhaps we could keep the high school times at, at 7:20 and, and do that 60 minutes. I mean, that, that might be an opportunity for us to, to look into. Mr. Zimzeki, I didn't receive an email about any docu-series, it might have been the, the prior board, so I'm not sure what you were talking about, but it could be a, a good opportunity for the district to make some additional money, make some additional, have some additional exposure. So we should look into that. Ms. Quarrel, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Maisig, Mr. Battershill, I, I'm with you. You know, we need to, I, I think the least we can do right now is to set a timetable or, or a timeline as to when the Education Committee can start presenting something and we can explore. I think when we do finish up or wrap up a, a family life health education curriculum, we should provide at least 10 days for the public to review the curriculum. So I'm just, I'm just throwing things out there. Perhaps have a, a town hall beforehand, so, so just a suggestion. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like to extend my sincere deepest condolences to Rocco's family and his girlfriend, Jessica. It is just so heartbreaking. On a lighter note, congratulations to all the students recognized today. I am a GW mom and I saw a lot of the children here and Mrs. Medley's group, so it was really exciting to get the email. My daughter was at the music of the park, so it was really exciting to see them succeed so well. And I know through the challenges of COVID, they were doing it over and over. So congratulations, we are really proud of you and your achievements. To all the PTO presidents, thank you for all your hard work. It is really tireless job. You are there all the time for the children and create great activities and we are really grateful. So thank you. I will echo Mr. Posakos' sentiments regarding the health education. I would like us to involve the parents more and I am on the Education Committee and I express that all the time and we have great dialogue with Donna about how to go forward. So just trust us with the process. I think having a timeline and getting you involved and showing you what the teachers come up with will be a big part of it. So we're, we're trying to work with you as well. Thank you.
Also, my congratulations and thanks to the PTO presidents. Thank you to our student reps, have done a great job up here. And if you listen to the reports at our board meetings, in addition to the music students that we honor this evening, we have so many activities that our students participate in. And whether it's a chess club or a marching band, soccer, basketball, United Nations, it's just amazing what Wayne offers our students. And with the support of the PTO. I'd like to congratulate Joseph Scarrali on his Eagle Scout and I'm hoping that perhaps he will appear here in, in June so we can honor him in person. The, the school board has a long history of honoring Eagle Scouts at our meetings, so hopefully we can resume that. And last but not least, Dr. Tobak, congratulations. It's wonderful to be acknowledged by your peers and thank you for doing such a great job for Wayne. I appreciate it. Last but not least, our thoughts and prayers to Rocco and his family. Thank you. Have a good evening. Move to close. Thank you.